I did do so well in the game, but it was okay. And we had a meeting with Alex and I encourage yourself and councilors, wires and councillor Kendall. And I thought that was a very positive, positive meeting. I have an idea of my homework, which was to do with GMOs, but I promised to get to it. What else? What else? I think that's it. We've got a business association meeting happening tomorrow, and that's for general, for the general membership. So we're going to have that over at Community Futures, and that's going to be an opportunity for those folks to start thinking about what input they might have for our next town hall meeting, where we're going to be looking at our phase two revitalization. So I'll bring back my report when I'm good.
Thank you. Councillor Wire.
Okay. I'll start my report with October the 4th. I attended the Kettle River Watership Management Plan Stakeholder Advisory Group on behalf of the mayor, and it was held in Midway. The agenda focused on water conservation. They were sharing a roundtable discussions on successes within the region, challenges and opportunities in the water use sector. We recently spent, Council on Moles have afforded us close to a million dollars on securing their water treatment to plug the leaks, as he said. That was finalized last spring. The roundtable discussion on water metering would suggest, and they got to water metering because it was pretty evident that suggestions, one of the key suggestions was developing a five-year timeline whereby all municipalities would develop and implement a meter installation program throughout their jurisdictions. And rethinking of landscaping level practices. You know, we have to, no longer do we envision acres of green grass. We've got to start turning that around. And the short of it was, the case for water use reporting in B.C., and I gave a copy to our C.A.O., County Redraw, was brought up at the meeting, and we have all been asked to read it, so I'll give you a copy as well. And Graham Watts emphasized that this report came out of the open organ, and he recommends that they all read it before their next meeting. And so that they can get, they want to keep it a simple principle in water conservation. And the fact is, nobody knows how much water we're using. And it's going to have to be, it's going to be a long process, and we know, as they stated in the, in the session, that they're not going to have full compliance. We discussed, you know, well, what do you do with the fellow that, you know, just bypasses your water meter as well? Those things are going to happen. But over, over the long timeframe, there's going to be compliance gradually, and it's going to be a long education program in working with our constituents and that to, to realize the importance that, you know, this water could run out one day, and we're leaving nothing for our grandchildren and their children. And then following that, the National Dog Sled Association held their annual supper, and that was the fourth one on October the 5th at the seniors hall. And this year's race has been announced. It's going to be the Dog Sled Sprint Classics. It's going to be a whole different format. The races will be sanctioned by the International Dog Sled Association, and it'll be more spectator friendly. They'll be running two, four, possibly six and eight mile races. And they're having it at Jubal Lake, so it'll be more spectator friendly, and they'll have a two-day event up there. So there'll be more information coming out of that. The fall supper that they held is, is their annual fundraiser, and it was very well attended and a lot of support. On October the 9th, I attended the regional district committee policy procedures. Yes. Policy executive and personnel committee.
Excellent.
Yeah. There's no procedures.
I don't.
Don't confuse me. So it is, I attended that on behalf of his, that meeting was held in Trail. And as a footnote, I have celebrating the International Day of the Girl Child with FCM was on October the 11th. So that was an announcement. And that leads me into my discussion on the Head Start for Young Women's Program that I introduced this morning at the Committee of the Hall. And the proposal from FCM, it is funded by the Women's Institute of Canada. Currently, the FCM does have a program called Women in Local Government that was started back in 2006, celebrating 10 years of action, innovation and results, where they're targeting 30%, of female participation in local government by 2026. And as a spinoff, there's, there's always the talk of engaging the youth in our communities and getting them interested in the political arena or interested in their community in general. So the Head Start Program was launched, announced at FCM in May, the end of May when we were down there. And it was also an opportunity to, well, they, they pushed it out there that there would be looking for seven pilot communities across Canada to launch this program. And it'll be driven by the youth that are participating, ideally six to 12 young, young girls between the ages of 16 to 24. And it'll be focused and driven by themselves, and they will identify a project that they would like to, to launch based on their perceptions of what local government is and how do they feel that they would be participating if they took that step? Or why don't, why wouldn't they take that step? So tonight, I wanted to bring, and this is a good time to do that. I wanted to, at the Committee of the Hall this morning, I did, I did raise the point that I needed support. So I had spoken with our C.A.O. when I, I had gone ahead with the interview process and applied, and when Grand Forks was accepted as one of the seven communities across Canada, there's one in B.C., Alberta, and the rest are in eastern Canada, one inside of Ottawa, one in Quebec.
What I call it.
Yes, yes. And it's a one-year project to start with, but I see this as an opportunity for our council to get and engage the youth in our communities. Close by. So the motion was to receive support from the city of Grand Forks to launch this Head Start for Young Women program in Grand Forks and take it to the budget table in 2014 or something.
Do you make a motion? Councillor Dory, second motion and discussion.
I'm just wondering if, because it is, I mean, it sounds like a great program. I've read through the literature. Is there something in place for you on that?
No, right now you have 85% of the presence in politics. But what I'm saying is, this is going to be a start to young people in our community with this initiative, and I can see it moving on. We have in the past talked about a youth council or a, yeah, in general, and initiating some involvement from our high school, you have a student council, but we've never taken it anywhere. So this, when this project is completed, there, there'll be opportunities for, for us to carry on in our homes, I can see. So this one, it gets initiated for them.
Yeah. No worries.
What, what we can do as a council is, is our proactive after, after winter. They, they, I would love to see it continue on and open up right over.
Councillor Kendall.
Yeah, I think it's also a good marketing program as well. Do you have any idea how Kennedy is chosen?
It's not so much chosen. We're going to go out and I'm going to be speaking to the high school, and I've already spoken to South Park College and at the Redmore. I've spoken to Community Futures, because they have youth programs. So we're going to draw, it might not be, it might not be as easy as you think. Hopefully we get a big turnout, but speaking to Melissa from FCM in Ottawa, I, I thought of the bigger picture. I was, I was envisioning, you know, 25 or 30, how big of a region can I branch out to? Realistically, they like to see a small group because they're young girls, and they are, you know, this is a whole new field for them. It's, it could be very intimidating. And I also, when I heard of, you know, that sixteen to 24-year-olds, I mean, I know somebody who's like 29 and 30, but those are the type of blades we can bring into the fold as mentors as well and others.
Councillor Collins. Ready for the question? I, I choose to support this, I think, too, very much. Councillor.
So you said it's FCM funded?
It is, it is funded by the Women's Institute of Canada through FCM. There is not a lot of, it's not like we're going to get a check for so much money. They will support us in background if we need materials.
Basically, it's mature, those types of things, probably, she said it seems thousands, thousand dollars.
Yeah.
We just have to have to do that to our own.
I will know more about that when we get closer to our budgeting process, I guess.
And our project base, they have it as well, young ladies.
So there will be some costs involved.
Yeah, that's right. I think from our perspective, it's going to be more of an amenity kind component, and basically some form of the mentorship, some of that organization, because depending on the product they pick, they might, you know, because we've had students committing engineering students in the past, our kids who would talk about engineering, maybe they were a distinction, about their engineering development services for a few visits. Some people might find what our office does, what CFO does, so they'd be looking for a little bit of mentorship, potentially. So because we just, it could be the leadership that the council offers from the accounting department as well, so we don't, I don't anticipate any large costs in terms of this.
Ready for the question? David.
Oops, here. Thank you.
Councillor Kendall.
Thank you, Monsieur. I'm sorry, is that?
Well, I was, I did, I did attend Alex's, M.P. Alex's, I'm the name of the stuff.
Thank you. I attended the annual golf, five-day event, and through that, we managed to find four women's older myself to put in a curling team at the ministry this year, so the city will be represented this year, whether that would be there. And our C.A.O. is part of this assembly of captains. I attended locally meeting of the Long Range Museum Society. This has kind of been an unbelievable year for them, I feel, running out of, pretty finishing touches on their new 40x40 display, the real affair. They're actively pursuing solar electricity to light it in to even collect some, they're working really hard on that. The new port of the Arminia Heritage Club Center there, I think, has been a wonderful success this year, the kind of support is, Councillor Wire, Officer Wires and Mentor Grand Forks and everyone else who's been involved there, and to continue to be a really feather in the hat for everyone at all.
Do you think tons of green are riding?
It's out of the trend. Yeah, the, the lead is, according to Walter Wallace, yeah, they're, the, the new cloth by the milling machine should be there, so hopefully they'll be making white flour in the future. So I just like to congratulate everyone there. It was really nice at that meeting to sit with a lot of people who've been on the board for a long time and see some greater enthusiasm at that table again, so I think that's a real positive thing to do. And right along with everyone else, I attended the specialities, Alex and Henkel. And last thing, my report, I just came to a reader campaign. I spent an hour with the porter of ruins outside of the Gazette. Had a stellar bunch of people come to and donated a pile of money, and I think the total was 760 dollars or something they raised this year, so it was great. And the porter of ruins guys were, were really good, and was really trying to spend a little, that's the other part.
Thank you very much. Councillor Crowe.
Okay. Did the raiser reader thing? See, you just, you meant the whole paper. Yeah. That was actually a pretty awesome track with the porter of ruins. So, and good response from, from people in the community, so that was kind of nice to see. Along the same lines, Ms. Dopey has, has set up a meeting with Minister Linderarsen to talk about the funding that they get and the cutbacks and stuff. So she's asked me if I would be at that meeting, which is, we haven't got a certain time yet, but I think it's going to be on the calendar for it. So I'll be attending that. And attended the seniors dinner that Daniel Chu hosted, and shared what was awesome enough to speak on behalf of the city, because you have. And again, maybe look forward to it. I know it was even, even before the advertising, a lot of the spots were taken because people marked on their calendar for last year. I had to see, Dan, oh, yeah, it was, it was kind of nice. And that's, oh, it's a golf thing, and nobody died, so that'll sit. Things happened before, I'm sure. And I guess that's fine.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to pass on the report. I think you covered the whole, I like that. I'd like to congratulate the group that decorated the camp art building. Speaks to the enthusiasm of the group to the floor. Sure, yeah. And yes, we, we did that this morning and talked about the upset management meeting that, again, it was extremely worthwhile. Mr. Allen had set it up so that he knew a lot of the players that were there that were out there to hear what was going on from the field. We had Glenn Brown from the ministry, and we had a representative from the federal government. There were also a lot of other engineering firms and various other kinds of people who knew from, so we were under close scrutiny. We had great handouts, and I think compliment the city for having the visuals. We didn't use overhauls or, or the usual flip charts. We, I think we came across strong and we came across confident that we were out in front with what we were asking, and we made a point of pointing to ourselves as a potential demonstration community. The other thing that I really enjoyed saying was that we were a healthy business, that we were basically, you know, if you want to put your money on a good order, we're one at this point that's running well. I thought that we should brag about the fact that we're doing day-to-day business on a, on a solid thing. And so, you know, we're the kind of community where it would be worth a risk to allow us to, to move ahead of the pack. It was kind of interesting, there was some strong words there said by some people about the fact that what has been happening historically is that if you screw up and don't plan and everything falls apart, then the ministry and the government steps in and helps you. And so to turn that around, we're saying clear, you know, show appreciation and reward communities that do get their homework done and moving forward. So that was our message. I think it was well-earned, again. Thank you very much to the C.A.O. for setting. Okay, and motion to accept councillor report. That's councillor Wire's, all of those in favor. Regional District? I don't have much to say there on the regional district, doesn't it? And we have our October 24th meeting coming up. I'm really hoping that everybody can be at, and I know councillor Wire says, she can't get out of that, it was unfortunate, but unavoidable. But for all of her, she, she has been possibly dependent on time. Okay, well, we're certainly going to, again, show confident together, face to the regional district in these discussions around the project. And any questions on the regional front?
What was the date? But next week, October 24th.
Councillor Crowe.
Was that the, on your practice? Not a single question?
Okay. No questions? Okay, motion to accept regional district report. Very consistent, proud, always fair. And we have information items, they, to state, sure. So, motion to accept our decisions relating to the distribution of the items, and that's councillor Dory. FCM received for discussion consideration, participation program, we've done that this evening. I think all the implications on the books, in the Auditor General's report, I would go red, memorize important parts, it'll be explained on it. Is there anything, Mr. Allen, that you would like to say on that annual report?
Councillor, I'd just say that all of the papers will be subject to potentially having the auditor general coming in, so we don't know what that impact is going to be until we get some feedback from the other local governments that have had this reviewed, other fund organization. So once there is a little bit more feedback on that, I'm going to be starting to test phase with a couple of the organizations and have the, the auditor general team come in, so I can report back on the effects. We might be feeling good results, but I know there's a, a tentative feeling in the industry on this, but I think after the auditor general comes through and the impact is minimized on the organization, it'll be assessed confident. So I'll, I'll be the way the council works and just be more thorough process.
And next thing, Mr. Hankey, the LDS, offering us assistance with our art, so we'll receive that, and I'm sure that that's being followed up on by our C.A.O. And that includes the items on our shortlist this evening. So all those in favor of this position, go. Carrie. The final reading on bylaw number 1976, 2014, our annual tax exemption by law. So this is final reading, I have the motion for your council authority, Councillor Crowe, discussion, all those in favor. And the next item is, this is the rural residential to our three multiple family and has to do with the wildlife also, that is available for use by religious groups and organizations. So we are looking here at giving final reading to bylaw 1987, speed limit property at 782nd Street. So, Councillor Crowe, you think so, authority, all those in favor. Carrie. The late items, and we're open to any questions from the media or company, employee or less.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Through you, I guess, the C.A.O., could he explain the process, its speed limits, how they're set in a city or town, how you change them?
I think he could please do that, Mr. Allen.
Sure. Mr. Grant, the speed limits are standings, we've done it in the municipalities, our 50 kilometers, that's standard all across B.C. There was recently a movement, E.B.C.M. to have this, have the speed limit altered, and that resolution was brought forward. And I don't know if there was a need in there, I think with the, where we have the ability to control our speed limits is on our municipal streets and having high, high density areas. We control our placing playgrounds, and we have the ability to control the speed limits within our municipality to a certain extent. So, you know, if, if the speed limit was to be altered, we would look at the rationale for why, and it'd be supported by a, generally a, an engineering report, safety report, a traffic impact study, or a traffic impact safety analysis, for that, for, for straight relations to move that forward. So as we look at the developmental park area, high density area, there's a lot of development, we might use some there, we also have to recognize this is a traffic complement, so there's all kinds of queries we'll do, look at. But from a traffic, speed limit perspective, it's usually done by the traffic engineers via a traffic impact study or a traffic safety study.
So in the end, Mr. Grant, it's a provincial decision.
Provincial decision on the main highways, on our highways within the city.
And within the city, the streets and roads, the council, with the engineer report, et cetera, et cetera, change.
Very much so. If council holds that ability to do that, stop, but bring forward the report, and, and council can at that point make a decision on it.
We have to approach the, the second street speeding. Is that a concern that brings this forward in your mind?
That is, in my mind, a real issue in this city.
The second street.
Second street.
Yeah. People rushing to work, and that's been something prior to our attention on a number of occasions. So you were saying, are we going to address that?
No, I'm not asking that question. I just wondered what the process was.
Right.
And it seems very complex.
Well, I, I'm not sure it's complex in a ground.
No, I think it is something that's very real and attainable for us to deal with. One of the things the council has asked for is an engineering report to have a look at the intersection. I think it was second and market, potentially for a four-way. What we are going to be doing is we're working on second and 68th as well in cooperation for future form, looking at that intersection as well, create some enhanced safety aspects of that intersection. When we have the traffic engineer come to town, where we just counseled last time, we'll be pushing for a financial plan this year, and we'll be having a look at that intersection as well. The manager of development and engineering services will have that report generated, and the recommendations will come forward to be part of the council's consideration. And just so we know, where it comes to Market Street, one of the challenges we'll be doing is referring to our, our request to administrative transportation. They look at the queueing, which is called stacking of vehicles during the peak hour of the one peak, the peak day of the year, so they look at this, and they use this water analysis, they'll use the new traffic analysis, and they'll say August 20th, or if that's the peak day, or the school day, they use that as the peak day, and they say, how much room do you have to store vehicles in your community? So, and that's sorting along the main street while the lanes are being changed, because the ministry's made it clear they don't want to change their level of service on highways, arterial levels, and that meaning, meaning the level of service would be the frequency that the lights come on and off and the duration of time.
I would like you to add 72nd to that list, because that intersection is also a bound line.
I thought that was the one that we had actually been talking about, 72nd. Sorry, 72nd, so it is 72nd. I know council, that is, is with the manager of engineering services.
You said 68th, 72nd, and.
Market.
Market.
Yeah.
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor, with regard to roundabouts. A couple of weeks ago, I was in Vancouver, walking around Kinsalada, came across a couple of small, 12. So what kind of process was that?
Mr. Mayor, what happened was there was a survey that was sent out to us, to staff from our perspective, and I think there's some correspondence around through to the different meetings selected from those tables. But there was, there was some requests about basically talking about what we thought potentially going to be used for. And what we talked about from an administrative perspective, we talked about concerns regarding financial impacts for our organizations. The auditor general's running team, it doesn't affect the operation of our organization. Some of the other concerns that we had were, at that time, reasons would have, would have an impact on our budget process, would have an impact on our, on our ability to continue day-to-day operations. Those are some of the feedback pieces that we had. And that's really what our concern is about our business. Thinking the process is put in place to, I believe, the provincial government to ensure that, you know, the provincial government is looking out for the taxpayer's health as well. You know, and they have a central team to acquire from us, what we felt is a team. But they also have a very strong team from a local government background to support those teams. So they were able to develop all this material and now they've brought up two communities that have had requests to, you know, to have looked at or others had wanted them to look at.
So how often will that be an annual thing?
We don't know yet. We simply had the initial consultation and she's addressed us at multiple functions. I believe she addressed the AALG. I believe, I know she addressed the Local Government Management Association. She addressed the CAOs across the province, in January, Victoria. She's been out, I'm trying to think of the situation out there, but there's a lot of reservations on a lot of communities right now that are concerned with what type of impact this is going to have from there. So that's where we're at right now. But this is the initial process. This is the kickoff this year. So it's going to be the growing pains of this. And I believe it's a five-year process and then whether the provincial government continues to possibly be something better.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Come on. Any further comments on the floor? Motion to adjourn. Counselor Dory.